And uh. Great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you and welcome to the League of Women Voters for the School Board and Francis Benjamin will be speaking about who he is and what he represents. So our nonpartisan statement reads and I should, I think, I think before I read it, I think I should do a share screen. So give me just a second. Share. Can you, whoops, can you all see this?
Yeah.
Okay, the League, the League of Women Voters acts in support of or in opposition to selected governmental issues which its members have studied. It does not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. League members as individuals are urged to work in the political party of their choice. To protect the League's nonpartisan policy, guidelines regarding the political activities of the Board of Directors are reviewed frequently. The League of Women Voters of Pullman is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and practice. These concepts are central to our current and future success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. We acknowledge and honor the first people of the Pulis region and their descendants, including our neighbors, the Nesspers, Cobble, and Coeur d'Alene tribes. There we go. Okay, now I'm going to now turn the meeting over to Deb and she will be the moderator tonight, Deb Olson.
Well, um, thank you all for the questions you sent in. They were great. Unfortunately, I screwed up because, okay, um, I just heard that Al Sorensen will not be attending tonight. So we cannot have a debate where the questions are asked and each candidate answers them. I strongly suggest anybody who's interested, check out the forum, the primary forum that was held this summer. I don't remember the date. The address or the link is on your screen in chat. What I'm going to do is ask Francis to give his introductory remarks and talk about himself a little bit, and then we'll move on to the next part of the evening, which will be the School Board. If you have, I encourage everyone to ask both Francis and Al. Personally, you know, send them an email with your questions if it's a burning issue. So let's get started. Francis, you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Deb. And, and I do agree with Deb that if anybody does have a question, please reach out to me. You know, my website is Benjamin for Pullman at dot com. And so it's easy to, easy to find me and I gladly have conversations. I'm Francis Benjamin running for city council. Many of you know me, have, have met me before. I previously served on council. I, I served for about 12 years on council and got off council, was off council about six years ago. During the time that I was on council, I also served for the state organization, so Association Washington Cities and was president of Association Washington Cities where I represented all 281 cities. And so I'm very familiar with not just Pullman and city government, but also others, other cities and how they work and the, and the connections in that way. For a little bit about me, I'm a longtime Pullman resident. I actually was born in Clarkston, grew up in Lewiston. My dad worked for Potlatch and was transferred back to a Minnesota mill. So all this, all but about three years of my life, I spent in the Quad Cities. Is either Clarkston, Lewiston, Pullman, or Moscow. This definitely is home and I enjoy it. I've been in Pullman, Heidi and I've been in Pullman for over 35 years now. And Heidi and I, we, we met it, we met in college and fell in love with Pullman and saw Pullman was a great place to live and to raise a family. So that's why we stayed and, and raised our three kids here and are very, very much dedicated to Pullman. I'm very active. Do, if you have any questions around that. I do everything from volunteer for high school to volunteer for entrepreneurs in training pieces in addition to community council on aging. So I'm, I'm very focused on, on our seniors in addition to our youth. Just really all around. I feel that for someone to be involved with city government really needs to be out in the community, connected to the community in that way. And so that's why I really take time to learn those things. What I've been doing since I've been off council, I've been very focused with Pullman 2040, where that's something that is a grassroots community process of looking at what do we want Pullman to be like in 20 years? And, and, and through that, I've learned a lot from what individuals want in our community and have worked hard in order to help make those, really bring those to pass. And it's been enjoying that way. If I look at for council, the area that I'm really focused right now, getting on council, the first is building a welcoming community. I want Pullman to be a community where people feel that it is home and that it has the amenities that they want, whether, whether it's for, for their age or whether it's for their culture. I think Pullman does a really good job of being welcoming for the college students and for families with kids. But there's areas in which we can really grow as it relates to cultural, as, as, as it relates to young professionals and also as it relates to our seniors. I, I, I hear less people that say they're going to retire to Pullman than those are going to retire elsewhere. And I want, I want for our seniors to really feel like they're supported in our community and this is be a great place to retire because I expect to be one of those at some point in time. Continuing on, I think our downtown is, is very critical. This, the city council is starting to focus in that area and that's something that it needs to be expanded with not just infrastructure, but also looking at how can we, how can we reach out and get businesses into the downtown? And also, how do we get the truck traffic off of downtown? And that's with the bypass. And I really feel just like we did a heavy lift and have done our work with, with the airport and have new runway and new facilities there that we can, we have a couple of projects we need to, need to do heavy lifts. One of them is related to the bypass and another one's related to water and long-term water sources. So that kind of gives you a feel of the things that I'm, I'm very interested in. I welcome conversations, any questions that you have and any specific things and, and you will find if you do reach out to me, I will try to get you connected into a way that you can also be a part of this process. I don't feel that I have all the solutions myself, but I feel as a community, when we come together, we can actually get the best, the best solutions and for our community. And so I, I really do invite you and ask that you do vote for me and that together we can build our community together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francis. And like I said, watch the primary forum. It was full of lots of interesting topics and discussion and contact the candidates if you have questions. We will be moving on now to the School Board election. The two candidates are Nathan Roberts and Carolina Silva. Remember, we now have a lot more time we can spend. All of my timing's been thrown off. So ask a lot of questions. And you just type them into the chat bar on, the chat on the menu below the screen. So.
Could I interrupt you on one thing? Um, I believe Carolina is actually Carolina.
Carolina. Oh, excuse me.
Silva.
So, um, I see.
If you can remember that.
Yes. You're muted?
Yes. Hi.
Hello. Nathan, you there? You, you okay to start? Ready also?
I think so.
Okay. I will, you will have two minutes. This, Bobby, you have to do your timing thing now. You'll have two minutes to answer for your opening statements and they will begin now with you, Nathan.
Yeah. So first, thank you for having us and hosting this debate. I always appreciate the League of Women Voters coming to the board meetings and just being engaged in the schools. And honestly, this is a really great forum for our local elections to kind of meet the candidates. And so I've always appreciated hearing the presentations and I just learned some more about Francis Benjamin. So that's pretty awesome. So my name's Nathan Roberts. I've been a Pullman resident for 15 years. My gosh, it's gone really fast. I came here for WSU to get a master's degree and kind of never left. I currently have two kids in the district in Camiak Elementary. My wife works at Schweitzer Engineering and I previously worked at Meter Group, which is right next door to Schweitzer, but currently work at Washington State University. I've been there for five years as a business analyst. And so that's kind of my experience in the community. The last four years I've been on the Pullman School Board, three of those I served on the Washington State School Directors Association Legislative Committee, representing Eastern Washington at a state level for education policy. And so really just, you know, trying to get out our Eastern Washington perspective to the West Side. I'm not sure. I think that's probably it. So we'll get more into the questions. So.
Okay, so it's Carolina?
Yes, and I just, okay, I'll start talking.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Carolina Silva and I'm a, I've been a resident here at Pullman for about five years. I've moved from Los Angeles, California, where I lived there for 18 years. And before that, I am from New York. I am a New Yorker, born and raised in Queens, New York. And currently I work at WSU in the AMDT Department Apparel Merchandising Design and Textiles. As an instructor, I teach five courses. It's my first year as an instructor. It's a loaded course load, but I love it. Pullman educator and a candidate for the Pullman School Board. And I have just one agenda, which is to ensure that our children obtain the best education possible to prepare them for the future. My top priority is to keep kids in school, safely in school. Education has been disrupted by COVID-19 pandemic, but it didn't have to be. So I really strongly believe that we have to really work hard with our recovery plan and really focus on reaching out to the children that have been affected the most by the pandemic and by the school closures. And I believe that children also deserve leaders who embody kindness, empathy, and decency towards others. What else? I grew up being told by my, by both my parents. My, I'm also Hispanic. I represent the 30% minorities here in Pullman. But I grew up being told by my parents that you can be anything you want. You can do anything you want in this world. And those personal ideologies are being threatened today by critical race theory. And I'd like to know what my opponent really, you know, has a position on critical race theory and other topics we'll discuss in the questions there.
Okay, well now do the questions. Everyone will have, you will each have two minutes to answer. You get the same question and we'll alternate who starts first. So I'm going to start off with Nathan. Why are you running for this position? What makes you the, a well-suited candidate for a seat on the board?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I mean, I'm not going to lie, the last four years have been quite stressful with the pandemic and with, you know, we had some staff issues when I first got onto the board. And so it's been quite a ride for the last four years. You know, and I've, but I've really enjoyed it. I, I believe that I really want to run again because there's a lot of stuff that we wanted to do that we couldn't because of the pandemic, because of the disruptions. For instance, you know, looking into creating a skills center, trying to get skills programs to, to our high school students, bridge programs from middle school to high school. You know, trying to, to continue to work on staff communication and culture in the district, which I believe we've done a tremendous amount of progress in those topics. And really what I think makes me the best candidate is I'm just super passionate about kids, you know, I, I have two kids in the district. When I visit the schools, you know, I just, I just feel the energy and I love it. And I, I feel that, you know, not only do I really just, just enjoy being part of the environment and part of the system. Personally, I believe that we have a civic duty to, 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 you know, participate in our representative democracy. And so you know, this is what I think I can contribute as a, you know, a data analyst or as a, you know, Pullman resident or as a, you know, just someone who's very passionate about education. I, I really think this is where I fit.
Thank you. Carolina, the same question. Do you need me to repeat it? Carolina? Did we lose her?
Oh, no, I was on, I was on mute.
Sorry. You can stay off mute if you want.
But as Pullman is growing, new residents are coming in and Pullman is growing. I've been here for five years and wow, have, has it really been growing with all the construction and whatnot? Even, you know, in, in midst of the pandemic, but new residents are moving in from various areas around the country. We need to have a board member that can represent those individuals culturally, educationally, in terms of the different experiences they have really had. In order to create an inclusive learning environment for current and new students that will be enrolled in our school district. So I represent the outsider, but I've actually have also the history and personal history from working with LAUSD, from ABC Unified School District in California, and from my own personal history of working with other school districts in New York City. So I've seen big pictures. I've seen how big funding works and whatnot, but I definitely do think I would be an asset to the school board and have a different perspective of what the newcomers in our community are expecting. Thank you.
Thank you. You get to start the next question.
Okay.
If elected, will you commit to attending all school board meetings and regularly attending school functions to show support for teachers and staff?
Absolutely. I will definitely commit to attending all the school board meetings. I would also like to say that I am, am a newly joined member of the Quanis group. And I've tried to participate as much as I can as well within the Quanis team. And within Lincoln Middle School, I'm currently trying to join and be the Builders Club Coordinator. We're just waiting for someone in the Lincoln Middle School to step up from their end to as a parent or whatnot to work with me. But I am, even though my course load, my workload is pretty maxed out, my commitment is really to the students, to children. I have one, two, two boys, one of them, which is in Lincoln Middle School right now, this 12-year-old boy. And I have another one who's 19, turning 19 next month, and he's in the US Army. So children, education, that's why I came here to Pullman. I came here in terms of really looking to work in education and I got that. So the more involvement, the better. I love it. Thank you.
Okay, Nathan, same question?
Yeah, no, so I, I do have a full-time job at WCU where I've worked over the last several years. And so I do find it difficult to come to some daily events. I'm not going to lie, but I have made a point to come to as many as possible. I also have regularly attended board meetings as is evident by the, you know, by the record. And I would plan on continue, continuing to serve in that capacity. I also serve routinely on a state committee. That's I mentioned earlier for WASA, which we meet eight times a year, usually in federal way, sometimes in Spokane. But we, I have made it a point to take, you know, vacation, even to travel to those meetings when possible. You know, when necessary, and I haven't missed one yet. And I, and I have also taken like, say, vacation hours for other commitments for the school board, you know? And so I'm really, really try my best to make every meeting. And you ask if I would promise to make every single thing. I would do so within, you know, the best of my capability. But I all, am always available virtually and I'm always available with my cell phone. I have come to regret this a couple of times, but I put my personal cell phone on my public profile. So you always know where to get ahold of me, right? So, um, but yes, I would, I would make it, make it a priority to attend just as many school functions as possible. Honestly, because it's, it's part of being a board member. You really, you really want to participate in the community. You want to be seen by the staff and the students. Because I really think it helps build some esprit de corps. It really helps us all feel like we're part of the group, you know, that we're part of the team. And so I do believe it's important for board members to show up. And I, I especially, you know, one of the, the silver linings of the pandemic is a lot of meetings have had a virtual component, which have allowed a lot more participation for myself and really from people in general.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. You'll start the next question. And that is, the school board, school board works primarily by consensus. What is your experience in building consensus among differing opinions?
So generally, I would say honestly, and you probably will notice this just by watching the board meetings, but we are, we are a kind of a voting as one body board, I've noticed. There's very rarely any times where we disagree fundamentally, where we have votes that aren't, you know, all one way or the other. And I think that kind of is a testament to us building consensus. You know, we try to, we try to communicate and work on our disagreements or misunderstandings about particular policies. And we really try to yield to the superintendent's judgment a lot of the times because as a board, we really don't often know the, the intricate details of each policy. And so we rely on our administrators to kind of help fill the gaps, to help inform us about the implications and like consequences of a particular decision. And I think we all kind of fall back on that. The kind of collective belief that I think we're all here for the kids, you know, we're all here to, to, to promote their education and to ensure they get the best education they can. And, and part of that is, you know, sometimes we may disagree, but we have to come together as a board. And we've not always done that. I know there have been some incidences in the past where we disagreed sometimes publicly. But we, we really have tried to work that out. I know our board has worked together to kind of get past that. And I think we're working really well now and, and have, have moved forward through this very stressful pandemic. You know, relatively unscathed. And I hope we continue, you know, continue to do so.
Thank you. Carolina, do you need the question repeated?
Maybe, yes, please.
The school board works primarily by consensus. What is your experience with building consensus among differing opinions?
Well, what I'd like to really highlight and spotlight are the school closures and the social isolation that had negatively impacted our students' educational achievement and mental health. But these decisions were initiated. There's always someone who initiates it, someone who proposes the motion and it was led by my opponent, you know, it created unnecessary damage in our community. It really impacted mostly vulnerable students, special education students, English learners, Hispanics, minorities. These were the students that were left behind. They're still left behind. I know the district has a recovery plan in place, but there are so many parents, so many parents that don't know that there was actually a school, summer school this past year. They don't know about all the things that they can take advantage of to help their kids. So there's definitely a lack of communication between, I don't know if it's the school board, superintendent, the school board policies and how they're being implemented, how parents were actually learning about them. And that can be, really needs to be fixed.
Okay, you'll start, you'll answer the next question first.
Perfect.
You sort of already has mentioned this, but what is the most pressing? What are the two most pressing issues facing Pullman Public Schools at this time and into the future? And please explain why you think that.
Sure, thank you. And not only is it just Pullman School Board, School Districts, but it's all school districts nationally right now. When I, and I'm always looking at what's happening in different states. And I know there's different mandates and whatnot, but one of the most pressing issues right now, I believe, is how critical race theory is being driven into not only perhaps our curriculum, but really brought to the surface because of the lack of policies enforced by the school board in terms of really directing and forming and taking out those personal ideologies from teachers and whatnot. But critical race theory, it's, it's terrible. It in terms of, it suggests that your child's racial, physical characteristics determine their value and their perspective on and success on life. It violates your child's ability to thrive emotionally and intellectually by teaching them that they are either the oppressors or victims according to societal standards. I'm Hispanic. I, it, it daunts me, you know, to think this because my whole family, it's a rainbow of different shades of color. And I'm a minority. I come from a big city. So that's one thing that I really want the Pullman School District not to adopt those ideologies and to have policies that really protect our students. We need to put in place these policies that protect the emotional, mental health of our students. And the other issue would be vaccinations. Vaccinations are mandated right now in California and LAUSD and San Diego USD. There is talk about vaccine mandates in Seattle. And shortly, we'll be talking about that a little bit more in depth today too. So that is another big issue that like Congress.
Okay, thank you. Somebody.
Can you mute? There you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was hearing a bunch of feedback. No, so, um, I think really the we have a number of issues societally right now. And I think, you know, it's, I'm glad you said two because there's a number I could pick from and I think
I know.
It might have taken a while to, to think about that. But definitely the first and foremost problem that I see is, is addressing learning loss because of the pandemic. Especially that learning loss that we can see and have seen in the, in the different income categories and racial categories that we have for testing. And this, this, this learning loss is experienced across the board, across the state, but we have strategies to, to remediate it, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work from the staff. It's a lot of work. You know, from the students to, to work at that, to try to get it, get their education back on track to address that learning loss. But that really leads me into my next big concern, which is, is staff and teacher and administrator burnout. It, it's really, this has been a long 18 to 24, you know, months. It's, it's carrying on. Thank God we're getting better. You know, it, it seems like in the news, the case counts and whatnot. And we don't anticipate, you know, closures. And we're really looking forward to getting back to education, getting back to, to learning in person. But our staff are exhausted. Our teachers are exhausted. I mean, they were doing double duty for a year and a half. You know, they, and I was a teacher for a number of years in the university. And so I know what it's like. I built an online class one time on a grant for the history department at WSU. And I, I spent a lot of time just rewriting all my lectures, you know, and I think our teachers have been doing exactly that. They had to rebuild everything. They had to relearn how to teach and now they have to come back in person and do it again. And I think we're all just wore out. And that really is my chief concern.
Okay, since we're talking about the pandemic, I'll move on to that question. And Nathan, you get to start. Please describe the specific ways in which the board has guided the district's ongoing response to a changing pandemic. What have been the most challenging? What has been most challenging about the process and what would you change, if anything? Nathan, you muted.
Thank you. It wouldn't allow me to unmute. Sorry for that. No, can you repeat the question, Deb? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, yes. Please describe the specific ways in which the board has guided the district's ongoing response to the changing pandemic. What have been the most challenging? What has been most challenging about the process and what would What has been most challenging about the process? And what would you change, if anything?
So really, you know, I think the board, the board and the administration, all of the schools in Washington have been at the mercy of this pandemic for, you know, eighteen months. We've been at the mercy of changing guidelines, changing directives, you know, lockdowns and shutdowns and rules and regulations. And it's, I think, you know, we've all been overwhelmed by, you know, kind of sailing these rough seas. And really, the board and the administration has really tried to work together to deal with each issue as they come, you know, you know, bus driver shortages or substitute shortages or closures or communications, you know, we've really, we've really tried to work together. But also really give the, our administrators the trust that they need to get the job done. Because I think that's the last thing they've needed in this pandemic when dealing with all of these things, all of these changes and rules, which I think is the most frustrating part about this, which has been the constant changing guidance, which a lot makes us have to pivot and adapt. And that's really back to my other point, why our staff and fat and teachers are so exhausted, why our administrators are so exhausted, is because we keep having to change gears. We keep having to change rules. We keep having to change guidelines. And really, I don't know what we could have done differently. You know, I don't believe in hindsight. I don't believe in trying to, you know, re, reset, you know, I, I believe in learning from my past, but I don't really believe in, you know, just rehashing the same old debate. I think that our board really cares about kids. We care about students. We care about our employees. And we tried to do what was absolutely best for all of them. And, you know, with that being said, I wish we'd have known then what we know now, but we didn't. And so I, you know, I think that we did the best we could.
Okay, Carolina?
Can you repeat the question?
I thought you would ask. Please describe the specific ways in which the board has guided the district's ongoing response to the changing pandemic. What has been the most, what has been most challenging about the process? And what would you change, if anything?
The involvement and the voice of the parents and your constituents and the students and how we prioritize our students. I think parents' voices really matter and how they feel about their kids' education. That's where it starts from. Students come first. My slogan's on my logo, it's on my flyers and my banners. Students come first. The role of the school board and the Pullman School District is to really set and evaluate district goals and policies that serve the students first. The education and wellbeing of students must be the first priority. And I really feel that the parents and are the ones who have that, you know, invested and those desires to really put their kids first. The board needs to definitely put that first and foremost. But the first and over, you know, my first priority is definitely always going to be the students first. But without students, we would not have, we would not need teachers, you know, and yes, I'm a teacher. And I put my students first, you know, I worked in the pandemic. I've worked in person. So I put there and really value what their needs are over anything else. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to switch gears a little bit. I have a really specific question, so, and we'll start with you, Caroline, Carolina, excuse me. Now that Pullman Parks and Rec has moved into the new location, do you have any suggestions about how the school district could make the gym and the classroom spaces at Pioneer Center more available for use by the public?
Can you repeat that?
Okay. Now that the Pullman Parks and Rec has moved to a new location, do you have any suggestions about how the school district could make the gym and the classroom spaces at Pioneer Center, which was the old Franklin School, available for use by the public?
Collaboration and getting more information from, again, always our parents and our students, you know, in terms of how, what their schedules, what their needs, what kind of information and activities, you know, we can really blend with the amenities we have within our district would be prime. But I think we just have to really work on seeing where the space is, who needs it best, you know, in terms of what individuals would serve it best and how it would be served best. But overall, it always comes down to the kids and the parents, you know, and really deciding how, you know, these things really suit them best. Thank you.
Okay. Nathan?
Uh, yeah, no, thanks for the question. Um, no, I, I totally agree that that was definitely a boon for the school district is when the, the Parks and Rec moved out and we were able to especially expand our office space. We had a lot of staff members that were doubled and tripled offices. And so we've, we've been able to take over some of the spaces for new offices, which has really helped us, you know, ha- have a welcoming environment. It's also increased our ADA access. And so as we, we have worked on the Pioneer Center, we're working to get the superintendent's office, for instance, downstairs so that we can have better ADA access to, to him personally, so that he doesn't have to meet people in separate rooms. But the, you know, the gym in particular, I've often wondered, because it is so full of stuff. You know, you go up there and it's, and I know it's storage. And I know that, you know, there's not a lot, like, what do you do with storage, right? But I know we have been working on a plan to get rid of a lot of that. Most of it is, is, is been there because of the movement that's going on in that building, you know? We've got people moving offices and there was a remodel recently where, you know, there was a lot of stuff displaced. But as far as a plan, I would definitely start with cleaning out that basketball court. Because you can't use it until you get that stuff out of there. But really, after that, I would love to see the Pioneer Center used more frequently. I've often just, we're, we're working to get the building itself, not the, the side building, but the main building put on the historic register, you know, nationally. And so, you know, it's really a great building. And I think it's been underutilized. And so after cleaning it up, it would really be coming up with an access plan. You know, how do we, how do we staff it so people can use it? What hours are that? And, and, you know, going from there.
Okay, I have one more questions on my pre-arranged script here. So if you have questions, please send them to chat. Nathan, we're going to start with you. If you could change anything about the way the school board works, what would it be?
Ooh, that's a tough question. Um, honestly, I feel, and thi- this is such a complicated topic because it's like one of those things where it's a very delicate house of cards that our government is, you know? And like, if you change one piece of it, what is it going to do the rest? I do often feel as though there, there is a disconnect between the legislature, school districts, and the ESDs, the, you know, the super, the state superintendent's offices, that, that if I could change one thing, it would be collaboration between those groups, right? Because we get a lot of mandates from the state legislature that are executed through OSPI, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, that really just don't make sense. Either they're not funded or, you know, like, we get point one nurse, for instance, right? Like, that's just, it's one of those things where I would love to look at someone and be like, what? You know, who thought of that? That was a good idea, right? Like, what are we going to do with point one nurse? So we have to kind of self-fund that, right? And there's a million of those questions, which are, you know, we get a rule, we get a law, we get a thing, and it kind of gets dictated to us. And our local choice, you know, is implementation generally, right? Like, we don't have a lot of control over the actual object. But what I would really love is more collaboration, you know, on solving these problems together. Like, can we not get sufficient staffing for mental health care, you know, for nursing, for bus drivers? I mean, we're having a really hard time now finding people with the correct licensing to drive a bus, you know? And so I think those disconnects, those, those issues really stem from a lack of collaboration. You know, the state funds it, the state mandates it, but then it kind of gets lost. You know, this is where I'm like, I don't know, but it gets lost somewhere between them and us. And that is the one thing I would just, I would really love to fix.
Carolina?
Same question. Okay, yes. It's interesting about storage because it pains me to think that the most pressing issues in our community today are about storage. But going to specifically your question about the school board, I would say the most, the area that needs the most help and fixing right now is the communication with parents and really acknowledging how parents feel and how they can communicate, how they could feel that they're actually making changes within their school board members, making moves and, and that the school board is actually listening to parents. But I'm going to take this time to talk about special education for, for a second. Because special education, I was an advocate in Los Angeles, California for special education for parents who needed some help with special education because of their kid, kiddos and whatnot. But we do need within our district more critical training for resource teachers, critical training, not just here's a online class or whatnot, but for resource teachers to be able to participate in an inclusion classroom. That seems to be one of the other issues. So you mentioned two issues before that, you know, we, that is really evolving and pressing our community and within our school. And I would say special education, we really need to work on advancing mental health and also helping our teachers create more of an inclusion classroom. It's going to help all the students coming in. Our community is growing. I'm going to always keep talking about that because it is. We're building more houses. There are going to be people coming in from all over different cities. I came from Los Angeles. So I think having an inclusion classroom and having teachers be able to have that training, resource teachers having that training to work with their kiddos and be able to really assess their needs and help them out.
Thank you. Helen? Have we got any questions in chat?
We sure do.
Excellent. I'm going to turn it over to you to ask the question.
Alrighty, I will pick up chat questions. Let me just start looking through them here. The first one we have, oh, sorry, who went first last? I totally lost track.
This will be Carolina starting this one.
Okay, thank you. Didn't want to screw us up. Okay. So, uh, Caroline, you can answer this first. Please define critical race theory.
Well, it was my opening statement, right? So, critical race theory, I'm going to kind of reiterate what I said. It really proposes that, or suggests that your child's racial, physical characteristics determine their value and their perspective in life, on politics. And it violates your child's ability to thrive emotionally and intellectually. If I was told when I was growing up that because of the color of my skin or because of the color of my dad's skin, that we weren't going to be able to get a college education or advance in life, where would that have put me? You know, I have a master's degree that I just got last year, you know? In the back of my head, it's my mom and my dad's message from when I was very little. You can do anything you put your mind to. And CRT, Critical Race Theory, breaks that. It does not even the plain feel. It does not, it's not equitable in no means. So, thank you.
Nathan?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not really sure, to be honest. I, I, to be quite honest, I don't know a lot about critical race theory. From what I understand is it was a, you know, seventies-ish, mark nineteen seventies-ish Marxist ideology, and that's ideological Marxism, you know, so not like Soviet. But it was a ideological Marxist theory, if you will, that race somehow, that race implicated every element of society, right? And so, you know, I don't really know anything about critical race theory, to be honest. What, what I do know is that we participate in equity training and that the two are often confused. And so I would like to take a moment to just, you know, debunk that confusion because I think it's very important in our society that we get rid of, you know, fake news or whatever. And so really, there is no, you know, to my knowledge, and I've never seen anything, you know, maybe because I don't know what critical race theory is, I wouldn't notice it, right? But, uh, I mean, to my knowledge, all we teach our school directors is equity, how to promote equity in education, how to promote a feeling of, of belongingness with all of our students, right? And so for me, that's the focus for our equity training. This is board training. There is no curriculum, you know, that I know of geared towards equity there, you know, we have a curriculum committee on the board that reviews all curriculum, you know, recommendations before they hit the board itself. And so, um, I, you know, I don't know where all of this buzz comes from. I mean, I do, it's like Fox News, right? Like, it's where it comes from. But frankly, it's not helpful to, to the, the, our schools, really.
Next question?
All right, um, let's see, this next one, we will start with Nathan. Can you tell us one radical change you've implemented in the last four years in the Pullman School District? For Carolina, obviously, this is one radical change you would like to implement if you're voted in.
So was it in the past four years or planned in the future four years?
Past four years, although, I mean, you answer that however you want to.
Okay. No, I mean, I think really, school boards should avoid radical change. I mean, I think we, the word radical concerns me. We try to stay within the limits of policy governance, right? Which, you know, we follow model policies given to us from the state, from the Washington State School Directors Association, from the Office of Public Instruction, the Superintendent of Public Instruction. And, and really, as a board member, we try not to get out of those lines, you know? And I think that's really the main job that we have, is ensuring that we, we deliver on all of our promises. You know, all of the promises that the state expects from us, that OSPI expects from us, and that the students expect from us, especially. And so, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't make any radical change. What, what I would love to do in the next four years is just get over this pandemic, get back to learning, get back to education, start working on our test scores, you know, start decreasing these income and race gaps in our, in our testing and in our education and in our performance metrics and our placements. I would really like to get to the work of education, you know? And this last eighteen months has frustrated me endlessly because of the pandemic. You know, it's like, we, we are only, you know, the board itself is limited to just like certain things we can do. You know, there's no physical, it's just exhausting. And so what I would love to do radical over the next four years is just end this stupid pandemic and get back to normal, you know? But that's, that's all I got.
Carolina?
Uh, can you repeat the question? Yeah.
Helen?
Sure thing. Um, please tell us one radical change you would like to implement if you're voted in.
Um, if I was voted in, definitely not closing the schools and really listening to the parents and putting our students first. So those would be, that would be the radical change, listening to our parents and putting our students first. Thank you.
Alrighty, this next one will go to Carolina first. What is your position on mask and vaccination mandates for schools, including teachers, staff, and students?
Well, for vaccinations, our teachers, they're mandated to be vaccinated. For students right now, the COVID-19 vaccination, it's on an emergency accepted use right now for, I believe it's twelve and up. But right now, I still would believe it's the parent's choice to decide if they want a vaccine, vaccinate their child. Vaccinations to this point are not mandated. Polio, MMR, those are not mandated. Students can waive or parents can waive those vaccinations and still send their kids to school. I do believe it is a parent's decision whether they want to medically, you know, vaccine, vaccinate their child. And also, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Nathan?
Yeah, thanks. Um, no, I'll start with masks. I mean, it, you know, they seem effective. I'm not a healthcare professional. We're mandated to wear them, so we do. You know, my kids don't seem to have a problem with it. Most kids I see, I go to Kameak Elementary every day. They're all wearing masks and seem to be just running around doing their thing, you know? So I, I believe in following the law, following the governor and following what are, you know, following what we got to do. And that's what we've got to do. The superintendent, the state superintendent's office has told school districts that we threaten, we threaten all of our state funding if we refuse to implement any of the vaccination masks or any of the other or any of the other policies that are out there. And so I mean, at first off, doesn't matter what my opinion is, the governor is going to tell us what to do and we're going to do it, right? Because we follow the law and we follow policy governance. And our policy is to listen to the governor, uh, is to listen to the superintendent's office. Um, you know, personally, I'm vaccinated, you know, I'll share that with the group. Um, I, you know, plan on getting my kids vaccinated as soon as I can because I'm tired of being afraid that they're going to get sick, you know? Um, you know, it, as far as a choice, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't know. And frankly, I don't anticipate, and actually, the, the state superintendent sent us a letter a few weeks ago explicitly stating that there would be no power for any school board to do a vaccine mandate, that any vaccine mandates would be coming down through the state and that is it. And so, uh, you know, from my perspective, that says, uh, I'll just do whatever you say, uh, you know, Jay Inslee, and um, we will follow the law because we want to fund our students' education. We want to maintain the security of our state funding because the last thing we need right now in this pandemic um is a fiscal crisis.
Next question?
All right, uh, let's see, this one will be for Nathan. Um, sorry, I got lost in the chat. I will pick it up in a second. There we go. Yeah, um, how can you facilitate better communication with parents um on a practical level?
Uh, it is, it's a difficult topic. Um, when I first got on the board, uh, that we really did put a lot of effort into communicating to the point where I think we were over-communicating. Um, communication is difficult um to do well, right? There's a fine balance between not enough, too much, different mediums, you know? Like we got Skyward and we got Gmail, we got email and Outlook and Teams. And, and so, you know, really, it's very hard. Um, and this is something I didn't really, I understood but didn't fully grasp when I got on the school board was that everyone has their own medium, you know? Some people read the paper, some people only get mail, you know, which I was like, that's, that blows my mind, but cool. Um, I, I learned that we have a list of those people and every time we have a communication for parents, we send them a letter, right? Um, and I learned that communication is hard, but I also learned that um, there are things that you can do to improve it. You know, we've, we've done a lot of climate surveys in the last several years. Um, if you haven't noticed, I'm, I don't know who here has had the privilege of filling out the surveys. Uh, but we've done a, quite a few surveys to collect community input. Um, quite a few surveys to, to gauge interest in different activities. Um, I, I do believe in surveys, but I think that they're exhaustive. I mean, they can just be overwhelming. Um, a- and then that's really the fine balance, you know, i- is trying to to, to, to hit the right channels and hit the right mediums. And, and, and this, and I'll say the last two years, the information has changed so rapidly um, that over-communicating has actually been our worst enemy, you know? Like, because if we communicate something too fast, um, it changes almost instantly. And then the next thing you know, we've lied to everyone, right? Or like now we don't, you know, and it's like, so there's this weird, and this is something like the last two years has really taught me is there's a very fine balance between over and under-communicating, um, but we're really trying to solve that.
Thank you. Carolina?
Yes, thank you. Well, communication is an essential part of the job when you're an elected school board member. It's essential, it's part of what you're there for because you're elected by your constituents, by your community members, by parents, right? Um, but uh, it's also important because if, if parents, if there, if we feel there is a lack of communication or there's no communication, it's a one-way street, you're going to get pa- parents taking their kids out. You're going to start losing students to neighboring schools, private schools, alternative placements, homeschooling. If you don't communicate with parents, um, there was so much money lost from students leaving, this mass exodus of students leaving. Um, and it didn't have to happen, you know? So communication is key. Um, and you'll understand, you know, what are the pressing issues within your community? So again, going back to Critical Race Theory, you can't really debunk what you don't know it is, you know? If you don't know what it is, how do you debunk it? You know, that's where that communication with your constituents and talking to your community members, talking to parents, you'll know this is a pressing issue within our community. So it's, it's sad, you know, that um, my opponent doesn't know that this is a major part of the conversation within Pullman. Thank you.
Next question?
Alrighty, um, what will you do to encourage more of our students of all backgrounds to be interested in STEM fields?
Carolina, you'll start?
Sure, um, one more time, the question, yeah, sorry.
No problem. Um, what will you do to encourage one of our, or more of our students of all backgrounds to be more interested in STEM fields?
Um, more of our students um to be involved in STEM. Uh, so I'm assuming you're referring to like Hispanics or women, girls, men um of different genders or whatnot. Um, I would, um, now this is an equity question, but um, I would definitely foster, um, go back to my inclusion um uh, response in terms of training your resource teachers, training the teachers, and really informing them, teaching them how to practice inclusion um accommodations within the classroom. Um, and that's a localized thing, really. Um, but really, um, I would go back to, um, hmm, in terms of STEM, really trying to foster more of an involvement also with our community, within our, not only just our community, but with um other organizations, um, other businesses where, this is where I always think of like a career day where we have different um types of uh professionals come in and really speak to the students, you know, so they could really have different um and resonate with different types of individuals. So they'll see, you know, um, uh, minorities or women or in different places really be able to present what their um jobs are in the STEM field and um to really be able to resonate that with the students more in um, and I always think of a career day placement or a career day event, you know? So I think that is definitely something that's lacking here in Pullman is having those outside, um, even at WSU, you know, inviting outside um faculty or professionals. So that's how I think I would definitely um work on increasing the, and making STEM more equitable. Thank you.
Nathan?
Yeah, um, I think uh, I'd like to, to expand people's conception of STEM to include technical fields. Um, you know, welding, electrician, plumbing, trades crafts, you know? Because I think that, that is something that's sorely needed in our town, in our county, in our state, in our nation, right? Um, we need trade skills. Um, I think we, we've looked into, and this is one of those mini projects where the pandemic has kind of completely waylaid, uh, you know, uh, progress. But I would really love to create a construction management program at the high school uh, to really get kids into uh the, the elements of construction like project management, framing houses, doing cool stuff like that, and set up bridge programs with like Spokane Community College uh, to, you know, do say two years in that high school, two years in, you know, community college or two semesters and then get a certification, you know? Um, that was something we were actually looking into, uh, and then the pandemic hit like immediately, you know? But fostering those connections locally, um, you know, with, with organizations uh that we have around us like Spokane Community College, like uh WSU, like some of our local industries like Schweitzer, uh, you know, which we do a lot of work with. Um, and also in, you know, improving our support of the robotics club. Um, I think it's kind of, you know, we have a robotics club, but it's not really a Pullman robotics, you know? And so I would love to, I would love to expand our robotics club to include more, more students, more kids. Um, because I think it's a super cool program because it includes so many elements. We went to a, a demonstration in Palouse, right? Um, and they showed us, they were doing like welding and, and, you know, machining and, and, and like programming. And so it wasn't just like, just, you know, kit robot, they built everything. And so I think, you know, promoting more programs like that that are really hands-on, um, I think that's the way we got to go.
Thank you. Next question?
Alrighty, um, what makes Eastern Washington and Pullman schools unique?
Nathan, you're starting this one?
Um, well, I would say there is a uniqueness about Eastern Washington schools, and then there is a uniqueness about Pullman. Um, and I'll start with the Eastern Washington. So, you know, Eastern Washington is a rural area. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, but we, you know, we have different issues, right? We've got, you know, for instance, busing, uh, busing operates on an efficiency model, right? The more people you get on, the more money you get. We have to bus like hour and a half to pick up a few folks, and so we constantly lose money in busing, right? And so when we come to state legislatures, we're like, hey, uh, you know, we really need you to change this equation so that we can, we can actually fund our buses. Because right now you're penalizing us for ridership efficiency that's lower than what you would like in an urban area, but we're a rural area, right? And so we always have those rural issues, broadband, internet access, uh, you know, access to repair facilities. I mean, I think it goes across the board. We are rural, you know, a rural county, um, and that does, does define our schools. Um, and Pullman is a special thing all its own in Whitman County, you know? Uh, Pullman, Pullman has an amazing group of faculty uh that we can often call upon for skills uh, that we can call upon for their education and experience to help our students. Um, but we can also call on the undergraduates, you know? We have tons of programs where the undergrads come into the schools uh through the College of Education and, and other, you know, other groups. Uh, and they mentor our kids, you know, they mentor our, our football players and they mentor. Um, I, an elementary student taught my kid chess, you know, a couple of years ago. Um, and so, you know, I think that's what makes Pullman special and something I really love about it is that marriage of rural um, a- and the, and the, the kind of culture you get with the higher education community. Um, it's a really special place and I think it makes our schools really special, too.
Carolina?
Thank you. Um, I moved to Pullman specifically for the small-town feel, and it is small-town coming from, you know, California. And um, one of the most eye-catching details of the Pullman School District were all the amenities that it has, specifically the high school. The high school has an amazing wood shop, they have photography rooms, they have ceramic classes. Those are things all lacking. They have a metal shop. Those are all things lacking in most of uh high schools, let alone districts across the nation. So the amenities were amazing. And I was like, wow, this uh students here are really going to be prepared in terms of they can go into different trades, you know? And I went to school for industrial design and I took wood shop, I took metal shop. So I was like really at home and I took a tour of the high school and it was great. But um, the amenities and the art and all the teachers and the parents that really volunteer and create those after-school programs, organize all these PTA. Because of COVID, we haven't had so many um organizations um or opportunities to have um, different types of events and events for the children. But it was very lively here and I liked how many parents actually participate and really care about their, their kiddos. So that was one of the most eye-catching thing that drew me into Pullman. And I think that's going to drive in a lot of individuals from all over different places of America to Pullman because it has great amenities and the, yeah, so, especially the art department. Love the art department in uh the high school. Thank you.
Next question? Are we getting to the end?
I think we have like one more here.
Okay.
Unless anyone wants to throw one in at the last minute. But uh, what I have is, how specifically do you intend to address student learning loss due to COVID in the coming years?
And Carolina, you start.
Thank you. Um, specifically, I, I did go through the recovery plan that the district does have in place. And I understand how it's difficult to really implement it, you know? I hear all the challenges, but I think it does need to be looked into individually, you know? Uh, in terms of case by case of where the students are, where they need the help, um, specifically special education students. They have IEPs, they have recommend accommodations that come with those IEPs and they have a specific learning plan, a specific way of learning. Um, so I don't, I definitely want to spotlight that there needs to be a lot more resources put into special education to really manage resources. When I mean resources, I mean personnel. We do need more personnel, we need more mental health um professionals within our community, within our school district. Um, so really fostering those needs from the children of what they need most um, would be a great start to mitigate, you know, where things are. Um, as it is now, there are policies put in place that, for instance, IP meetings could only be thirty minutes long. You know, it's in the, um, for professionals, teachers to actually attend, and that's not enough time, you know? There's not enough communication between parents and their teams and their special education teams, so that needs to be fixed. Um, and I think we really just need more staff to really get hands-on. Um, but in terms of really dissecting the problem, students' needs, where everyone's falling, what are they lacking? Test scores, all these things give us like a start in terms of statistically like what areas to focus on. But I know a lot of parents who are really fighting for their kids' education and they're not getting answers. Thank you.
Nathan?
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, I think some of the things we're doing right now and will continue to do, uh wisely spending our S R money, which is the, you know, the economic recovery um money that we receive from the federal government. Uh, we added, we added paraprofessionals to a, a number of different grade levels um, to, to kind of help uh with those students and to try to help, um, you know, alleviate the, alleviate the burden on the teachers in the classroom to kind of help, uh, to really help address that learning loss, you know? And so we, we did provide um a summer school over last summer with those S R funds. Um, and we will continue to use those funds uh in the best way possible. And really, that's as a board member, what we can do to help our district, right? Is we, we spend our money wisely, um, we promote the right things, we promote the right agendas, and then we get out of our administrator's way, you know? And I've been really proud um about how Bob and Roberta uh have handled the, the, the learning loss issue. I mean, I think that our, our uh teachers, you know, together have, have banded together. We're looking currently at mastery-based education, uh, trying to standardize some of the lessons at grade levels across the district. Because that's one thing we did find out when we moved everyone around, is that different schools were teaching different ways, you know? Uh, one elementary school would teach one way and one would teach a different way. And so through that mastery-based learning model, we're really trying to, to give our students an equal education. You know, give them an equal lesson, give them an equal plan, and that way, when they get to middle school, we, we kind of know they have the same knowledge, right? But as far as going into the future, um, really just dedication to, to, to the education of our students, you know? We have to double down on the test scores. Uh, you know, the last time we reviewed them in July, um, I, you know, I was depressed. It was, it was not great. Um, and so we've got to fix that. We've got it, we've got to work. We've got to work on our basic skills, um, and we really have to work on, on, you know, encouraging a love of learning in our kids.
Thank you. Did I ask Carolina this question? You answer, okay. So is there another question or shall we wrap, start wrapping this up?
It looks like it's about time to wrap up.
Okay, thank you very much Helen for handling these questions on chat. One last thing I have to deal with. So, we're going to move on to closing statements and we will start with Nathan. You have two minutes.
Uh, no, um, first, I just wanted to say again, thank you for having us. Um, I always love participating in these things. It's kind of exciting, you know? Um, it breaks up a Thursday night for sure. Um, I just, you know, I want to tell to the voters, um, you know, I really just would love another chance to serve the, our community, you know? I, I really have a passion for, for education. Um, I love getting into the details, I love getting into the nitty-gritty, um, and I love doing the hard work. You know, it motivates me. And something that I really enjoy about working around education professionals um, is their love of their jobs, you know? It's infectious, it really is. And so I, you know, I would, it would be a pleasure for me despite the last four years, um, which have not at all times been enjoyable, you know, I'm not going to lie, it's uh at times been stressful. Um, but I would gladly do it again. Um, and, and you know, I would just really welcome the opportunity uh from the voters to get to do it again. Um, and you know, otherwise, I would say if you have any, you know, follow-up questions, if you want to know any more specific ideas I have, um, if you want to learn how to help, right? Because Because we have a lot of opportunities for community members in the district, from substituting to mentoring to, you know, what is your skill, right? Just let us know, because that's something we are sorely needing right now, um, is people. And so, um, I would leave you with that thought, is, uh, please let me know or our superintendent know if you would like to volunteer. Um, all I can do is forward you to the right person, but I would love to, uh, I would love to take advantage of any of your passions um, and, and help, uh, our district and you at the same time. So, um, it was a pleasure seeing all you tonight, um, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Carolina.
Thank you, Deb, um, I also wanted to thank you and having, um, this forum, it's my first time, it's my first time being a candidate for anything. But I do believe that Pullman deserves the best and I will continually push for excellence, ask the tough questions and demand thorough and transparent answers. I'm not shy, I get nervous, but I'm not shy, you know? I will tell you what the conversations in our community are. And there needs to be a bridge, we need to really bridge the gap between the communication of parents and the school board and how they are, they feel they're being listened to. I will do that, that would be my job, I will listen to the parents, I will listen to the majority and really have that as a decision marker. Um, so for dedicated, really passionate, I'm experienced community leader within my cities where I lived, um, I ask you to vote for me, Carolina Silva, I'm here to serve education, I'm very passionate about it. I'm very passionate about being a teacher and my students always come first, thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank the candidates for coming tonight and also all of you who attended. This is being recorded, it will be available on our website and on YouTube, um. Helen, did you put up the YouTube address?
For the, pre, the, oh, for tonight, um, it won't be available until I post it later on this evening.
Okay, well, you can search for it and find it.
Yeah, all the BB Pullman.
Yes, definitely. Um, ballots will be mailed Friday, which is tomorrow, um, please vote and thank you all for attending once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye now.
Bye.